Good evening, everyone. I want to call to order the August 28th, 2024 LFUCG Ethics Commission Special Meeting. We've got two advisory opinion requests on the agenda, approval of two others, approval of some minutes, the Ethics Tip Line report, and the financial information, financial interest statement update. First on our agenda, we've got Charles Martin with us. He has presented two different advisory opinion requests. That was part of your packet. The first of these, AO 2024-007, confidentiality has been waived. Is that correct, Mr. Martin? Thank you, sir. And again, we've got, we've got the request set out here. This is a Division of Water Quality request. They are wanting to do training services that can qualify employees to pursue a Class A commercial driver's license. One of the local vendors is a company registered as ARM Safety, and Adam Tackett, an employee of LFUCG, is listed as an officer of ARM Safety. And the question relates to whether or not that would be a conflict under the Ethics Act. Mr. Martin, do you have any other information that you'd like to share with us? Certainly the, the commission members, yes, please. Certainly, the commission members may have questions as well, but anything that you'd like to add to this?
The little man.
The little man, there. Thank you. All right. So I have this one I wanted to share. I just received this via email from our law department because they are reviewing the overall policy that we're developing for Class A licenses. And they say, I quote in the buyer's guidelines, that a buyer or purchaser requisition shall, for all purchases between $1 and $2,499.99 from employees or companies owned or managed by employees of LFUCG, obtain quotations from at least three vendors unless the buyer or the purchasing requisitor or requister determines that the acquisition of three quotations is impossible, cost ineffective, or otherwise is not in the best interest. I did not know that. When I asked this question before, I got different answers internally, which is what led me to the commission. And what I read there indicates to me that it is permissible because it doesn't say you can't. I'll share that.
And I guess in that regard, the amount that's being addressed, are you saying that either the amount is not enough or that this might be the only provider?
No. The way I'm reading this is that put this provision in, is that under all circumstances, if it involves a, an employee-owned company, even if it's for $1, you need to get competing quotes. You can't just give it to them. When I had asked the question before, because it was concerning to me was, is that, you know, because this person is an employee of the, of the government, everybody kept saying, we'll just hire him and hire him. Well, different people would say different things. And what made it challenging is that there's not a lot of CDL, Class A certified trainers around. A couple of years ago, the transportation cabinet changed the rules and made it very, very difficult to get Class As. And so there's only a select few. And he, this person's company, was one of those few. And my purpose was, is to make sure that we weren't running afoul with anything by asking that question.
Well, I think it still may come into play. And so I, I think that at least myself and maybe others might have a few questions. What, what, do you know what, what department or division of LFUCG Mr. Tackett works in?
I believe he works in Waste Management at the materials recycling facility.
So as a result necessarily, he doesn't have any influence in setting the contract terms, the standards, any part of, of the approval process for the Department of Water Quality, right?
Not as far as selecting the vendor, no.
And he wouldn't be participating in the establishment of the contract standards or specs?
No. The contract specifications would be very specific, and they would be written around what the Department of Transportation or Federal Transportation requires to be able to be a certified trainer. You have to be a certified trainer at a federal level in order to be qualified to give this service.
Do any other commission members have any questions?
So I do. So, so the point at which we're at is that you have, you have not selected ARM Safety, but the question is whether ARM Safety could be among the possible vendors to provide this service once you go through the process of getting, of getting proposals from at least three vendors. Is that right?
That is correct.
That's where we are.
That is correct. At the time, I'm sorry.
I was just, whether there's anything in the Ethics Act, for example, which would automatically disqualify ARM Safety from being part of that panel of three possible vendors?
At the time that I made this request, there wasn't any discussion about whether we were going to limit the dollar amount within that 2,500 or that 2,499 amount because not everybody goes and gets a Class A CDL. It's only going to be a certain number of people. And so one year, you might have three employees to get one, and another year, you only have one. So it's, it's not a constant type of training thing.
I actually have just a couple of factual-based questions. Can you tell me, does Adam Tackett, does he own the company or is he just an employee at the company?
He's listed as an officer under the Secretary of State's website.
Would he be signing the contract, any contract that you entered with him?
I can't answer that.
Okay. Do you, can you tell us a little bit about what this training would entail, what time of day, how long that your employees might be going through this training?
The trainers that we've used before, I'll use BCTC as an example because they're a training provider right now. Basically, you lose your employee for the entire month because there's a pretty intensive classroom training. There's also then driving training. Basically, you learn to be able to drive a tractor trailer over the road like you see on the interstate. So it's much more intense than what it was prior to the change in federal rule. How, when this would happen, I mean, that was one of the other questions about even if we were allowed to entertain a bid from this company or not, is how that they would be able to execute that during regular business hours because I have no interest in paying our employees overtime just to go get training.
So are you saying that, I may not have been paying close enough attention, that you're saying that that section that you were quoting allows for this potentially only if the contract is less than $2,500 total?
It just specifically talks about that $1 to $24.99.99. It doesn't say anything about above that. There's other parts of the purchasing regulations, like for purchases that are above that amount, you have to get three quotes, period. So if it's more than $24.99, you have to get three quotes. This further did and said, if even if you're going to hire you for a penny, you have to get three quotes because you're a government employee. And we don't want to just hand out $1,000 contracts randomly to people who already work there.
But this contract would presumably be in excess of $2,500.
On given years, potentially, yes, sir.
I mean, if you're training somebody for a month, even if it's just one person?
Right. It's going to be a function of attrition. You know, if people come and stay and we get everybody trained up, there may not be any year that I would send somebody to get Class A. But if everybody leaves, retires, or gets promoted, then I have a bunch of people that I've got to train up to be able to legally operate the equipment that we have assigned in our division. Right now, I would say I have five people that are waiting in the wings as far as this, revising this policy that the law department's reviewing right now because the question has come, who gets to go first? I can't send all five of them at the same time, especially when you lose them for a month at a time. It puts a real hole in the organization.
So do you have any sense as to what other vendors are out there that could provide this service?
BCTC, I know of a fact has a class that they, that they offer. We have sent people to BCTC already.
So that's two.
That's two, I know. There's one other one that is maybe in Winchester or Mount Sterling. I can't remember the name of that company, but though there's not, since it's still a fairly new federal regulation, the market really hasn't matured, I think, a lot in offering that type of thing.
Right, right. But, but if ARM was not a vendor under consideration, then you would have to get three proposals only if the contract was over $2,500.
I have to get, I have to solicit from three different vendors. And if they, if I get three people that don't reply, that still counts.
Right, okay. So, all right. But to the extent that this ARM is in the mix, it goes down to $1 or $1.01 that you need to stop with?
Right. And, and the challenge of that, as I said, is that either you go with the local community college, which you know what you're getting into there. But with the others, if you go to one, do I have to send then somebody to Mount Sterling or wherever? And your overall cost of training per individual increases because you've got, got to pay the travel for them as well.
Mr. Mitchell, with, with something like this, is, is the vendor providing, you know, the vehicles that they're practicing on, the facilities, things like that? Or in your experience, would they be using LFUCG equipment?
Typically, they're using LFUCG equipment. You're usually providing that itself. There's a thing called a Class B, which is a much lesser CDL license, more to drive a snowplow or a school bus. We have a lot of those things as well. And the vendor that does that for us uses our facilities and our equipment.
You know, in addition to price, what other considerations would there be for selecting a vendor? Is it simply price, whoever's the cheapest?
More often than not, you know, government tries to use the best value. Obviously, you have to be a qualified person as well. And then, again, back to that federal standard, you have to be a qualified certified trainer in order to be able to do that. You know, the logistics of it all. A couple of years ago, we, when we all were kind of caught off guard with the new federal rule, they competitively bid this for the government as a whole because waste management, streets and roads, a lot of other divisions have CDL drivers as well. And the, the people who were the low bid were in Campbellsville. And it's like, you know, I'm not going to send somebody to spend a month in Campbellsville. So we had to try to find some other way to be able to do this.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Mr. Mitchell, thank you. I'm going to entertain a motion for us to go into closed session so that the commission members can, can discuss our thoughts on this particular topic.
So I move to go into closed session pursuant to the Kentucky Revised Statute 61.810, subsection 1F, and Kentucky Revised Statute 61.810, subsection 1J, as discussion of AO 2024-007 may lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an employee member or officer and contains the determinations of a quasi judicial body regarding individual adjudications.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to close session.
What the, the Commission thought as to advisory opinion 2024-07, I'll entertain a motion.
So I move that it is the opinion of the Commission that the Water Quality Department may in fact include ARM Safety among the vendors in its, in its proposal for bids for providing services for commercial drivers licenses, provided that Water Quality, the Department of Water Quality complies with the rules regarding bids that may involve a company owned by a LF UCG employee. However, it is also of the opinion of the Ethics Commission that if ARM Safety were selected, that selection would raise a separate set of possible conflict of interest issues involving Adam Tackett that would have to be addressed at that time regarding his involvement in a contract providing services to LF UCG as an employee of a company providing those services.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? You have a second? Christine, thank you. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that we thought about in that regard is, is, you know, as alluded to by, by Mr. Blake, it's okay for you guys to, to get a bid from them. It's, it may be an issue for Mr. Tackett. And so that would, that's a separate issue for us.
I get it. I get it.
Okay, you can stay right there, sir, if you wish, because we have, we have another advisory opinion, AO 2024-008. On this one, confidentiality was not waived. And so I will, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session on that one.
So I move to go into closed session pursuant to the Kentucky Revised Statute 61.810, subsection 1F, and Kentucky Revised Statute 61.810, subsection 1J, as discussion of AO 2024-008 may lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an employee member or officer, and contains the deliberations of a quasi judicial body regarding individual adjudications.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, because this is one, because confidentiality wasn't waived on this one.
So I will entertain that motion if someone would like to make it. Is, is there a second? Second. So moved, so we are now in closed session. While we are in closed session, we